The rundown is brought to you by Commonwealth Brewery Limited. And good evening to all of you. Welcome to the special edition of the rundown coming to you live from they tell me one of the most special places in the Commonwealth of Bahamas. We are live in New Byte Cat Island tonight, and I think they told me I have some radical Cat Island residents here. Are you here, Cat Island?
Yeah!
Pretty much. We have a jam packed auditorium tonight. People excited and eager to hear about the revolution that is taking place here on Cat Island. From everything, the new roads, improve water systems, a new airport on the way. Things are certainly picking up here on Cat Island, and I'm told there's even more to put in store come 2026. So why exactly has the small business development center come to Cat Island? Well, as it pretty much have done all year round, we've been bringing you these special town hall meetings throughout the archipelago of the Bahamas, and that's important. Why? Because SBDC says it's more than just about New Providence. The development and economic boom that the country is experiencing must be felt from Bimini in the north to Inagua in the south. And SBDC says it's their mandate as a part of the Davis administration's purpose of revitalizing the islands to ensure there's economic activity. Tonight on the rundown, which is really our final show for the year on the rundown before the Christmas break, we decided to end it in grand style, and they told me if you want to go big, go big or go home. So we came to go big tonight, and what's why we landed in Cat Island? I must say, on a very smooth runway. I was quite impressed with the landing today on the runway. It was a little hard, western air, but nonetheless, runway was smooth. And we're going to talk about some of the economic developments that are taking place on the island. And of course, we're going to hear in just a few seconds. To get us started, before we go to our first break, we're going to hear from someone who has been the architect of this revitalization on Cat Island. And to many of us around the country, he is the Honorable Prime Minister, but the people on Cat Island, he's their Member of Parliament. And of course, he's making sure that their needs are indeed met and that they can make sure that home is taken care of first. The Bible says, take care of Jerusalem before you could go to Samaria and all the uttermost parts of the world. So what he's doing is making sure he's taking care of his Jerusalem. How y'all feel about Cat Island?
Yeah!
And Honorable Prime Minister is coming to welcome the people of Cat Island to this town hall meeting and hear about all of the developments. And you have a front row seat wherever you are, in your bedroom, in your front room, wherever you are around the Bahamas. Those of you who are watching us in the Turks and Caicos Islands, always good to have you. Those of you watching in the Caribbean through our flow channel links. And then, of course, those of you, especially Bahamians, watching from around the world through our YouTube links, we are always happy to have you here on the rundown. So without further ado, please welcome the Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, the Member of Parliament for Cat Island, Runkey and San Salvador, because y'all watching too, the Honorable Philip Edward Ray Davis.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. It's indeed a pleasure to be home again. More importantly, well, the thanks to ZNS for and the SBDC for holding this town hall meeting just to sort of highlight what is happening here in Cat Island, which is being replicated, quite frankly, throughout our family of islands. You know, there's nothing more important to me than talking about the future of our island and islands, particularly now in Cat Island. This is the island that gave me my start, and long after politics, this is where I will be, probably in the little field like I was as a boy. I think often about those days in the field, early mornings, the smell of the soil, the sound of roosters, the steady work that teaches you patience and discipline. Back then, I didn't know anything about being a lawyer, much less the Prime Minister. I just knew that my family believed in hard work, faith, and looking out for each other. Those lessons never left me. They guide how I look at leadership, and they guide how I look at Cat Island today. I know many of you are proud of what this government has been doing, and many of you are frustrated by what is still not fixed. That is honest. That is fair. Both things can be true at the same time. We've been through some tough seasons together. Prices at the food store have climbed. Night bills have been too high, but coming down. Water issues have tested your patience. Some roads have been rough for far too long. Families have had to stretch every dollar. Some of your, some of our young people feel pressure. They leave home to get ahead. So some of our elders feel forgotten. At the same time, we can see that change is starting to take place and take shape. We see the trucks and the heavy equipment moving up and down this island. We see the roadworks, the waterworks, the airport upgrades, the clinics under construction, the new ambulances. We see more jobs in some areas, and we hear about investors looking at Cat Island with fresh interest. So tonight, I do not want to pretend that everything is perfect, but I also do not want us to miss the progress that is real. My job is to face both truths with you and to talk honestly about what comes next. I came here this evening for three reasons. First, to report to you face to face on the work that is happening in Cat Island, Ramkins and Salvador, and agencies representatives will be here to discuss those with you. The road and water project, the airport works, the new desalination plants, the clinics, and the energy plants. You deserve clear information. You deserve some timelines. You deserve to know where we are keeping pace and where we are behind. Second, I've come to listen, hear, to hear me talk all the time on the news. You hear me talk all the time on the news, and tonight, we want to hear you. I want to know how these projects feel from your side, where the detours are causing problems, where communications have fallen short, where a small fix could make a big difference in daily life. So just fix in Nassau are one thing. Your lived experience here is what really matters. And third, to talk about the future in a serious way, and again, you'll hear from members of the agencies present. I don't want Cat Island to be an island our young people leave and only return for holidays and funerals. I want Cat Island to be a place where a young person can get skills, work a job, open a business, and raise a family. A place where our elders feel safe and cared for. A place where the dignity of small island life is matched by modern services and real opportunity. That is why we're working on cheaper, more reliable power. That is why we're improving the roads, airports, and clinics. That is why we are pushing for better banking solutions, more support for farmers and fishers, and more help for small businesses. It is all linked to one simple idea. You should not have to choose between whom and opportunity. I also want to say this as plainly as I can. I'm proud to be Prime Minister of the whole Commonwealth of Bahamas. I truly am. But there is a special feeling when I sit with Cat Islanders and talk about our future. This island made me who I am. Whatever office I hold, I'll always be a Cat Island man. First, one day when I leave public life, you can find me right back where I started, right here on Cat Island, on the soil, probably arguing with somebody about which plant to put there in my little field. So when I talk about the future of this island, I'm talking about my own future too, and the future of my children and grandchildren. So tonight, I'm going to speak for a short while, as I am, about where we are, where the work stands and what we are planning, and you hear much of that through the agency representatives here. After I want you to ask your questions, bring your praise, but bring your criticisms too. Bring your worries and your ideas. Speak freely. You have a right to answers, and we have a duty to give them to you. We may not agree on every point, and that is all right. What matters is that we talk to each other with respect and with love, and the love we share for this island. So let's use this evening well, let us talk honestly about the problems, let us look clearly at the progress, and let us keep our eyes on the same goal, which is a Cat Island where our children can dream big, our elders can live with comfort and pride, and all of us can feel that place that gave us our start in moving forward. Well, thank you for coming. Thank you for your patience, and thank you for your faith in this island. Now, let us talk.
So you have it from your Member of Parliament, our Prime Minister, let's talk. He is ready to talk, and indeed, we are ready to listen and to hear what it is the people of Cat Island have to say. We're going to take our first commercial break, and when we come back, we're going to talk to those special people from the various agencies who can give you those answers and take those questions. You're watching the rundown live from Cat Island. We're back right after this.
I am a master plumber by profession. I've been doing plumbing for over forty odd years. When I was but nine months old, I was diagnosed with polio. To me, living with polio, I took it the way it is. I never allowed my polio to get in my way of anything. And fuck, I love when people doubt me, and I just prove them wrong. And let me tell you, in the world, you could only find a plumber as good as me, but you ain't gonna find no plumber better than me. People with disabilities, they just need a chance. In this program, I feel so encouraged. Most of the mentors have different kinds of disability, but disabilities like me, sharing and caring and showing so much support with people with disability. They would encourage you to go beyond. I wish this was around a long time ago. Right now, I would have been a millionaire. You, the ah who have a disability, don't be afraid. Take the step. If you believe it, you could achieve it. And remember one thing, ain't no one better than me, and ain't no one better than you. God made all us equally.
For more information about how the SBDC can help your small business to make a big impact, give us a call at 461-7232, or visit sbdcbahamas.com.
This holiday season, the music of Christmas comes alive with the Royal Bahamas Police Force Band at the annual Christmas Beat Retreat. Experience festive melodies, vibrant performances, and the proud tradition of one of the nation's most beloved bands. It's the Royal Bahamas Police Force Band's annual Christmas Beat Retreat, Sunday, December fourteenth at 4:00 PM, live right here on the ZNS Television Network and live streaming on our Facebook and YouTube platforms.
Let's swim Bahamas. Water safety rule number five. Never push anyone into the pool or off of a dock.
What's trending in business? Who's making major money moves, and how's it shaping your future? This is Economics, your front row seat to the biggest stories in business, innovation, and finance. Powered by the sand dollar, the digital currency of the Central Bank of the Bahamas. It's fast, secure, Bahamian. We're breaking down the numbers, the news, and what it means to you. Tune in every Thursday at 6:00 PM for the trends, the insights, and the stories that matter. Get informed, get inspired, get in the mix with Economics.
Hi, I'm Desmond Saunders. Want you to tune into the new weekend edition, Saturdays and Sundays at 7:00 PM, where we have a whole lot of new stuff for you. All right, so I'll give you a sneak preview. Boldly Bahamians, Sizzle Saturdays, parliamentary bench, just to name a few. So buckle up and get ready for the ride. Coming this fall, the new weekend edition, stay close.
Only the sun covers a bomb is better.
And welcome back, everybody, to the rundown. It's a, it's a perfect evening here in New Byte Cat Island, and if you're just joining us, we are live on the ZNS network and online on all of our digital platforms tonight from Cat Island. And that is just simply some of the technology that we've been able to introduce over the past few years under the Davis administration is ensuring that live TV can be brought to you from any island in this archipelago and any country in this world. And so we're excited about the advancement, and that advancement is being felt from island to island and is no different here on Cat Island. There are a number of people who will be, who will be responsible for ensuring that the progress and the development is sustained in Cat Island and it moves to completion. And they're here tonight as a part of the panel on this special Small Business Development Center Town Hall Meeting. And this is really getting an opportunity for the people of Cat Island who have come out in great numbers tonight to ask their questions, get understanding as to what is happening with the projects and how they can access a part of this success that's going on in Cat Island through their businesses and their financial opportunities. If you want to introduce our panel tonight, that's going to take us through that journey. I want to begin with the Deputy Director General of Tourism and the Director of Aviation and the Office of the Deputy Director General. Of course, he is no stranger to us here in the Bahamas from the Ministry of Tourism, Investments, and Aviation. Please welcome Mr. Kenneth, Dr. Kenneth Roemer. And right next to him in the center, of course, is the person responsible for organizing these special town hall meetings and making sure that you can access the critical funding. Because at the end of the day, you know, Bahamians would like to say, well, I get it. Only certain people get. She's ensuring that that is a thing of the past, and once you come forward and apply and qualify, it will be accessible to you. And that is Executive Director of SBDC Samantha Rolle. We also have the Senior Engineer from the Ministry of Works who's responsible for ensuring a lot of the infrastructure development that you see, the big, the nice new roads, smooth. I tell you, absolutely smooth, continues and the development continues, and he, of course, is a part of the Ministry of Works, the Senior Engineer, Mr. Dexter Williams. And then right next to Mr. Williams, of course, you may know her, you've seen her often. Time, a very good partner of the BCB. She is, of course, the CEO of Bahamas Power and Light. Good. We're just testing. When I called her name in Long Island, the power went out. But obviously, that's not happening here in Cat Island. I saw them bring generators, let's back up all day today. They knew the Prime Minister was gonna be here, and they wasn't having that. CEO BPL, Tony Seymour. I like that one, Tony the Tiger. We also have the Head of Family Islands for Technical Operations at BTC, another partner of the BCB, Mr. Dominic Petty is here as well. Welcome, sir. And then the Assistant General Manager of Water and Sewerage Corporation, Ayla Isaacs is here. Happy to have you. So we've got a packed panel, and if you missed the first segment, you would have missed the Prime Minister give his address. He's now sitting back and in listening to the people respond to them, and he's going to sit here and smile because they got out into the questions, the people have. And so we're excited about that. We're going to begin with our information time, so that you can find out exactly what it is that's happening. And I want to begin with Executive Director of SBDC Samantha Rolle, because they're the foundation of why we're here. And I want to begin, I guess the question is based on SBDC's engagement with Cat Island entrepreneurs. What are the most pressing, the pressing challenges that you've identified that businesses face here on the island, and which specific programs or resources does SBDC offer to be able to address those?
Well, thanks so much, Clint. We found that in order for businesses to operate, to thrive, to be successful, they need to be able to have that enabling environment, that infrastructure, working utilities in order for that to happen. And so while SBDC stands ready to provide the support, whether that is funding support, whether that is business advisory support, whether that is building capacities through our entrepreneurial training support, you also need to hear from our partners as to, well, if SBDC is ready, how ready are you? And so we thought it fitting to make sure that we have the relevant persons here to speak to that. But when you are ready, we are here, and you must make sure that you are ready for those opportunities. Don't wait until the opportunity arrives, right? And so our message is to get ready. What does that mean? That means to ensure that you are formalized. We fund formalized businesses. We need to make sure that you have a business license, a valid business license. You need to make sure that you have your pitch deck, your business plan, depending on the level of funding that you're trying to access. You also then have to make sure that you have access and information to the opportunities that we offer, hence the reason why we are here tonight. We want you to know that we have programs available. We just recently launched the Men in Business Program, and so that is open right now. It will provide up to $10,000 of grant funding to any man in business, no matter the industry or sector. And so we wanted to make sure that we were here, that we were sharing what we have, the offerings we have, and how you can access us. Earlier, they would have met Agnes, who shared that she is here and that she's the on-island advisory support and liaison. And so again, Cat Island, oh, Cat Island, SBDC is here for you.
You said something I thought was very important, and I think people need to understand. You talked about up to $10,000 in a grant.
Yes.
What is the difference? Because some of y'all ain't understand, especially those of you watching, between grant and loan.
Okay, so thank you for that. So thus far, SBDC have invested over a quarter of a million dollars in businesses today on Cat Island. We've done that through a number of financing opportunities, whether it's grant funding. Grant funding means that there's no repayment.
There you go.
Grant funding means there is absolutely no repayment. However, we do realize that there are larger capacity financial needs when it comes to businesses. And so then we offer access to business loans, but in offering that access to business loans and through our financial partners, we then also guarantee those business loans.
Wow.
And so we have our flagship, which is the Guaranteed Loan Program. It offers up to $500,000 in funding. We guarantee SBDC becomes your guarantor on behalf of the government of the Bahamas, up to 75% of that funding. And in special cases, whether it's specific industries, you know, whether it's agriculture, clean energy, those types of industries, we offer up to $1 million in business loan, and then we guarantee up to 90% of that funding.
Did you hear that, Cat Island? Some of y'all should be filling out your application online right now while they, while they talking. I want to move over to the Ministry of Works because, of course, that's important with a lot of the development that's taking place. And I want to ask Mr. Williams, what infrastructure improvement is the ministry planning on or working that will help to create a more conducive environment for business development on Cat Island?
Good evening, Cat Island. Currently, we are working on the, the roads and the airports. The roads, we are installing ninety-five, approximately ninety-five miles of new S1, that's FDOT specification pavement from Orange Creek down to the south in Port O and then to McQuigge, and also the settlement roads. Also, the airports we have will be improving the New Byte Airport to ICAO standard. The length is 7,000 by, 7,000 by 100 feet with the necessary aids that would assist aircraft in landing. Also, in Arthurstown, we have, we have increased, improved the airport with two inches of asphalt, 7,000 feet by 150 feet wide with new aprons, upgraded aprons, upgraded drainage systems, upgraded navigational aids. I think Dr. can speak more about that. And on the roads, we have also will be improving the safety of the commute with the signage, the cat eyes after the pavement is done, and also drainage. So we want to minimize the flooding along the road. So basically, is a total infrastructural upgrade with respect to the road and the airport.
All right, some good information there. In other words, interpreting it for you is plenty roads, plenty new stuff, plenty drainage. All right. Thank you, sir. That's, that's a lot of work that's taking place. Is there a timeline for this work? Is it going to be spread over a period of time?
Yes, for the, the Arthurstown Airport, the runways basically finished, and the apron, the navigational aids are left to be installed, and also the building. For the New Byte Airport, that will consume the most of next year because it has to be totally realigned because of the length. There's an issue with the length. It could not exist, could not be extended in the existing profile because of the hill. So it had to be realigned. And then what we have, what we are seeing now, that there's a lot of swamp in the area of the new alignment that will require specific and special type of engineering treatment before we can come up with the base. So most of next year, that work will be going on, and also the roadwork will also be extended because the problem to the roadwork is that the materials to do the work are to do the asphaltic concrete element of the work have to be imported. And there's issue with the dock and the draft. So the mothership would have to take the aggregate offshore, then another barge would have to go and meet it, then they have to transport it, and then they have to bring it to shore, then they have to, so there's a lot of logistical issues. So the better part of next year. But it is progressing because we have designed it with respect to FDOT standards, so the same quality asphalt you get in Nassau is the same quality you'll be getting here.
Good stuff. Thank you, sir. Now, if you didn't know, the government has signed two important contracts for two desalination plants on Cat Island. And the current, we want to get an update on the, on the status of these two projects and what can entrepreneurs expect, expect pretty much, when it comes to reliable, piped, potable water, and we allow waters who should take that for us.
All right, thank you very much. And again, thank you very much to SBDC for having us here to participate in this town hall meeting. So where are we with the reverse osmosis plant? So currently, we have two plants that are underway. One that's located in the northern portion of the island, so that's more toward your Benetabla area. And then we have one that's focused on the central area. So this is in Dows, which is actually not too far distance from where we are right now. So that one that's located in Dows, Cat Island, is actually very near completion. So for persons who are on the island, you'd have seen an uptick of persons from consolidated water, as well as an uptick of persons from water and sewage, because we're actually in the final stages of preparing that plant for commissioning. So in very short order, that plant will soon be on stream, and we will be producing and distributing water. For the northern plant, we anticipate, again, those of you who are passing up and down that plant, you would see that we are making significant process, you would see progress. You would see that the tank itself is, you can start to see it as well, and you can have an appreciation of that. And we anticipate that that plant will also be on stream Q1, Q2 of next year. So with respect to that, we hope to be soon producing and providing water for the residents here on Cat Island. For those of you who would have already signed up, we appreciate and we thank you for that. And for those of you who have yet to sign up, I hope that you see, taste and see that we are here and that we are ready. And so please, take this opportunity. We do have our commercial operations representative here as well, who will be ready and willing to take your information. If you have not yet signed up, but do take advantage of the opportunity because we are here, we are ready, and we are coming. As was indicated, please don't wait. Be ready for when we come. So that's very good.
Thank you. I want to address this next question to Mr. Petty from BTC, because we understand that there are some challenges that you faced with connectivity. Is that correct? Okay, so we want to allow BTC to explain to us how they're going to address the importance of reliable internet, particularly if you're asking for businesses to go to the next level, they're going to depend on that internet. And we want to know, what is the plan to ensure that there's reliable, improved data for the islands of Cat Island? Now, they tell me I got to go to a break, so I can give you some chance to come up with a good answer. Because y'all, they can sell them for any old answer, right? Okay, I like y'all. I like y'all tonight. So we're going to go to a break. When we come back, BTC is going to tell us how they're going to magically solve this problem. You're watching the rundown live from Cat Island. We're back after this. Stick with us.
At Frame Studio, as soon as you enter the door, we showcase any individual that comes in there and make it feel like they are at home. The space itself is 1,800 square foot. Our side wall, which is industry standard also, is 24 feet wide. You could do anything that you can possibly think of. At Frame Studio, under our theme, "Now Create More", we look at Frame Studio as a canvas. And any artist know a canvas is blank, and then you create whatever you want to do, right? So we have where you could rent tools. We even have workstations that people could rent out to anyone inspiring to do what I've done, what my colleagues have done, or any other journey. I would say to you, don't be afraid. The worst someone can actually tell you is no. So if you have a vision, you have an idea, not everyone will get it. But if you believe in your vision, you believe in your idea, I say go.
For more information about the Creative Entrepreneurs Initiative and the Crafting the Bahamas workshops, email info@sbdcbahamas.com or call us at 461-7232.
Welcome back to the rundown. For those of you watching the rundown, I know we have a lot of viewers who are outside of the Bahamas, and you may be watching for the first time, wondering, well, where is Cat Island? It is around the central portion of the Bahama chain of islands. So if you know where New Providence is, you've visited the capital, you're going south, and it's around the central portion of the Bahama Islands. That's where you will find this beautiful place called Newbyte Cat Island. And it is indeed transitioning into an economic hub for the central and southeast Bahamas. Before the break, we were talking to the Bahamas Telecommunications Company, asking them, what can people expect? There have been concerns about reliability with internet, reliability with the speed for businesses, and with more businesses coming online and on stream here in Cat Island to take a part of this economic boost, their concern is, how do we ensure connectivity? Particularly in a time and era where everybody's now using the card. And you need those card machines working, you need to do online sales instead of just cash sales. How do you ensure that when people walk into their business, you don't have to say, our internet is down, we can't take your card? So BTC is, is that the case that you've been experiencing? I know, I know. So BTC has the answer. Can we have the answer, sir?
Absolutely. So first of all, I just want to take note to, I think it's Mr. Gilbert Kemp, who did the welcome. He indicated or alluded to the fact that there were severe communication challenges in Cat Island, relationships. So I want to first of all acknowledge that we do accept the fact that there are some severe challenges in Cat Island and in fact throughout the family of islands. So what, one of the things I want to say is that BTC is changing. And I want to give the CEO of BTC some credit because what had happened in a few short weeks ago, in fact, it was October 20th, there were some particular focus that was placed on the family islands. And that's when I was, my scope was widened to focus on the family islands. So I got to work right away, and I set a strategic vision multi-year to focus on modernizing the infrastructure throughout the family islands. So you will have the same modernization and reliability as New Providence and Grand Bahama as it relates to connectivity. So as it relates to Cat Island, I could speak without fear of contradiction that in the first quarter of 2026, we have some goals that are already settled. We are first of all focusing on fiber, repairing fiber, ensuring that the fiber links that come to Cat Island are secure. We're focusing on redundancy, resiliency, as well as we're also focusing on boosting the LTE network to ensure that the mobile data is the way that it's supposed to. Further, also Mr. Gilbert Kemp mentioned that there was 100 building permits that were issued in the year 2025, and he spoke to upgrades. We are committed to upgrading our infrastructure in the first quarter of 2026. And what does that mean? Everyone in the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, which is inclusive of Cat Island, deserve high-speed internet on the level that you can find in Grand Bahama on. And so that's what we are committed to. So when we talk about speed in terms of 200, 300, 400 megabits per second, when we talk about telecasting, when we're talking about whatever you can think of, that will happen in Cat Island. So you may ask, how would that happen? I am pleased to say that we actually have proof of execution. It happened in Bimini. We actually have upgraded the entire infrastructure in Bimini in a few short weeks. So Bimini is off the old copper infrastructure. And Bimini right now is experiencing the same level of speed that persons experience in Grand Bahama as well as in New Providence. As it relates to, I know Starlink is very popular in the family of islands. How does it compare to Starlink? We had a lot of pushback in Bimini as it relates to, you know, how it compares. But I'm happy and pleased to say that a lot of persons that have Starlink now have what we call BTC L. And so what it would provide for the residents of Cat Island, you would have the opportunity to get the TV, the internet, as well as the telephone at a level, again, like I said, that you would find in New Providence or Grand Bahama. So that's something that we are committed to by March 31st, 2026.
All right, so March 31st, things change. All right. I want to, I want to go and move on now to BPL. Because BPL, obviously, people are referring to the major outage that took place in Cat Island. Did any of you experience that? About two of you. So we want to find out exactly what are the plans for Cat Island with reliable power generation since that outage? And anything that they can expect to come that will provide relief?
Good evening, Cat Island. It's a pleasure to be here. And for those of you who don't know me, I'm a family island girl at heart. So reliable, efficient, and affordable electricity on all of the islands of the Bahamas is top priority for me. The government of Bahamas rolled out the new energy era, which includes microgrid installations on all family islands. So I'm pleased to announce that land clearing has been completed at the rear of our power station located in the Cove. RenewGen Pro was the successful independent power producer, and they're going to be installing 2.4 megawatts of LNG-powered generation, a 1-megawatt solar farm, and a 2.5-megawatt-hour battery energy storage system. So what that does for Cat Island, it not only increases the install capacity of the island, but it incorporates renewable generation into the mix, which pushes us closer to our goal of 30% renewable by 2030. I want to apologize to you for the recent outages that you have experienced. We did install a brand-new generator in September at the Cove Power Station, a 1.5-megawatt, brand-new Caterpillar generator. Unfortunately, that broke down. Yeah, so as with all things man-made, there are going to be inevitable challenges. Yes, of course, it's still under warranty. Thank you. We did fly in our technicians from New Providence, as well as the parts that were required to repair it. And I am happy to report that it has been repaired. I was at. I was at the plant earlier today. I saw it for myself. It's running. The second unit, so Murphy's Law, anything that can go wrong will. A second unit also went down. We do have sufficient generation. We have 4.5 megawatts installed at the Cove Power Station. The peak load in Cat Island is around 2 megawatts, which we saw during the regatta festivities. So we do have more than enough generation to meet your needs. But because we lost our two biggest engines, one right after the next, that created a need for us to do a rotational power supply. So some of you would have experienced some outages, and for that, we are truly sorry. But we are working around the clock. The team's on the ground. We send over teams from New Providence and the other islands as needed to make sure that you get back up and running as quickly and as safely as possible.
All right, there you go. So you can see, it's going to improve for you. You may have had some challenges with water being out. You may have had some challenges with power being out. You may have had some challenges with your phone being out. We're so happy that Zedaness is always on the air for you. We're now going to, yeah, we're now going to move on to aviation because of course, the excitement is brewing because you see this wonderful modern facility going up. And it's such a wonderful thing, right? Because I, we were landing today in Western Air, and the flight attendant was giving instructions and telling you that when you disembark, you'll disembark to the terminal. And people were blinking, looking at each other, laughing. And she kept repeating the word "terminal", and we were looking out the window, we're like, "Terminal". But, but I'm so happy to hear that one day, you will look and see the terminal. And it will be a wonderful, wonderful facility. And it's moving very swiftly, getting up and so forth. And we're going to ask the Director of Aviation to talk about really what's happening with the airport. There are two airports that are getting refurbished here on the island. And obviously, we're going to invite Dr. Kenneth Roma to give us an update on aviation and the plans going forward for aviation. Dr. Roma?
Thank you so much, Clint. Let me first of all make this as clear, because I heard you speaking about relationships. My maternal great-grandmother is a curry from Cat Island.
All right.
And of course, I am a Roma from Cat Island.
All right.
I'm just saying that so when you're asking your questions, I'll be answering. Remember, I'm one of y'all. I am family. So Prime Minister, it's always good to be home also. Let me, let me first of all, very thank the Prime Minister for giving me this opportunity to serve. And serving along incredibly wonderful and talented Bohemian starts as Bishop Anthony Voca, who was again the contractor, A&amp;M. And again, my colleagues working with the Ministry of Works and in our aviation ecosystem. The Prime Minister has coined and has said and gone on record to say that what we are witnessing now is the most aggressive family islands airport infrastructural program ever undertaken at any time by any government in the history of the Bahamas. We have, we have simply called it, we're not building airports. We have coined it now as the renaissance of our family islands. I recall, Clint, in 2022, in January, when I assumed office, that the Prime Minister said that he really wanted to have a project that would stall for many years, the airport in Cat Island, and caused us to aggressively develop that airport. At that time, there were about three airports in our project pipeline, and it grew to eight, and then it grew to 14. And today, we have over 17 airports across the length and the breadth of our Commonwealth. So what we're seeing in Cat Island is being mirrored and duplicated across the entire archipelago through our Renaissance program. As a matter of fact, we have already completed constructing and opening three airports. And we have now nine being actively constructed right now. And then we have about another seven or so in the project pipeline. This has never been done before in the history of our country. So, Prime Minister, thank you so much again for your leadership, for looking after family islanders. And so, Cat Island, I was one laughing also at the terminal. You know, in about 2010, I came here and introduced Sky Bahamas Airlines to Cat Island. And we didn't have the tent back then, so we had the terminal without the tent. And I remember again, the photo circulating that showed again the small airport, the tuck shop, the cloud board-looking thing in Newbyte. And I knew that the Prime Minister gave a mandate. My colleague in the Ministry of Work asked, when is it going to be built? I have two words for you soon directly, because we're not having an indefinite timeline to completing this. But we just didn't undertake the construction of an airport in Newbyte. That is going to be, I call it, the most sustainable airport perhaps in our country with 40% solarization. So the Prime Minister has been a global voice and champion when it speaks to sustainable development. He's modeling it in Cat Island. So you're going to get about a 20,000-square-feet facility, solar panels. You'll find there'll be room that speaks to the arrival of more visitors. We're speaking about the indigenous approach, cultural authenticity. Our native craftsmen will be able to spare their wear. We have a craft fire rescue building that is almost completed and will be commissioned in the Q1 of next year, followed shortly again by the opening of our new airport, Bishop Voca, in Newbyte. Then we're looking again at Arthurstown Airport. This week, we actually installed the roof truss in Newbyte. We completed over 7,000, 7,000 feet of new runway, again, building on facilities there that were not attracting the quality of visitors to our shores. What we have seen, Clint, is that the construction of these airports and this renaissance of our family islands has created a global buzz. We have seen evidence of this, such as the, as American Airlines, for the first time, they're getting their inaugural fight into Bimini that'll be open the Q, Q1 of next year. We saw Long Island Airport that has the hill being removed and the new terminal. And then Bahamas Air, for the first time, saying 100% seed capacity increase in Long Island. And American Airlines, and then these are new things. If we build it, they will come. And the same thing is happening again with Cat Island. This renaissance in Cat Island is going to totally transform the tourism landscape because aviation is the enabler for tourism. And we know that tourism is putting the 50% of value into GDP into the pocket of local entrepreneurs and stakeholders. And while tourism is the oxygen, aviation is the blood. Aviation actually fuels the tourism engine. So Cat Island, get ready again for an increase in visitors, for new opportunities for entrepreneurs and stakeholders, for increased airlift on your new facility, both in Newbyte and in Arthurstown, is coming soon directly.
All right, there you have it. There you have it. We're going to allow you to speak, to make your comments, to give your questions. We're going to do that. We're going to take another break. And when we come back, I know everybody's watching the clock. We have seven minutes to the top of the hour, 9 o'clock. What we're going to do, we're going to get approval from the General Manager. Zedaness will go overtime. And once we get approval for him, we'll keep the show going as long as you keep questions. When we come back, we'll talk to the people of Cat Island, right after this.
At Frame Studio, as soon as you enter the door, we showcase any individual that comes in there and make it feel like they are at home. The space itself is. The space itself is 1,800 square foot. Our side wall, which is industry standard also, is 24 feet wide. You could do anything that you can possibly think of. At Frame Studio, under our theme, "Now Create More", we look at Frame Studio as a canvas. And any artist know, a canvas is blank, and then you create whatever you want to do, right? So we have where you could rent tools. We even have workstations that people could rent out to anyone inspiring, to do what I've done, what my colleagues have done, or any other journey. I would say to you, don't be afraid. The worst someone can actually tell you is no. So if you have a vision, you have an idea, not everyone will get it. But if you believe in your vision, you believe in your idea, I say go all highly at it.
For more information about the Creative Entrepreneurs Initiative and the Crafting the Bahamas workshops, email info@sbdcbahamas.com or call us at 461-7232.
Agent, before we send you out in the world, we must make sure that your mission is in touch.
Yes, ma'am!
Agent one, what is a touch?
Physical contact, ma'am.
Agent two, what is a good touch?
Touches that make you feel alright, ma'am.
Such as?
A high five, a handshake, even a kiss, ma'am.
Good. Now, Agent three, what is a bad touch?
Touches that make you feel not so good, ma'am.
Like a slap, a kiss, a pinch.
And most important, if someone touches your private part.
And what do we do when someone gives us a bad touch?
We tell her, trust your adult, ma'am.
For help, ma'am?
Tell them, uh-uh, don't do that, ma'am.
Agent, I see that you understand. Now, your mission to spread this information. Just remember that touches are?
Okay.
And bad touches are?
Not okay.
So, Agent, go spread the word. Yeah, ma'am.
This holiday season, the music of Christmas comes alive with the Royal Bahamas Police Force Band at the Annual Christmas Beat Retreat. Experience festive melodies, vibrant performances, and the proud tradition of one of the nation's most beloved bands. It's the Royal Bahamas Police Force Band's Annual Christmas Beat Retreat, Sunday, December 14th at 4:00 p.m., live, right here on the ZNS Television Network and live streaming on our Facebook and YouTube platforms.
Welcome back to the rundown here in New Byte, Cat Island. We're hearing from many of the officials on the work that's taking place in Cat Island, and the residents seem very eager. Are you eager about the new developments taking place on Cat Island?
Yeah!
How many of you feel it's long overdue? You're excited, it's finally your turn. Yeah! It's finally the turn of the people in Cat Island. They have questions for our panelists, and Dwayne, tell us who you have first. Go ahead.
Okay, please tell us your name.
My name is Peggy Johnson, and I am a resident of Smiths Bay, Cat Island.
Go ahead, please ask your question.
My question is for the panelists that represents BTC. And my question is, when is there going to be compensation for the clients, your clients in Cat Island, for the inconvenience that we've been experiencing? Like, it's been tremendous, and it's been ridiculous, I mean ridiculous. You purchased a 10-day plan today, and BTC is out for five, six days. There is no apologies, no tax, no nothing. There's been no accountability from BTC for the loss that we've experienced as islanders. And every penny in this economy counts. That's my question.
Yeah, so just wanted to thank you for that question. Yeah, so again, so BTC does acknowledge the amount of outages that did happen in the past. As it relates to credit for the inconveniences, I cannot speak to that right now. But what I would say, we could address that on a one-on-one basis and/or we could also look at it when we probably go back, you know, and just speak to that as a group. But I cannot speak to that definitively at this point.
Okay, that question, we don't need the one-on-one for that, because that's the whole island, that's from all of us. We want accountability, and we want credit for our monies. Like I say, we have, this is the whole island. You purchase plans, data plans, packages, and the service is out for days. Not even, oh, we apologize for the inconvenience caused. No accountability from BTC at all. Money gone, time gone. You call, and people answering you in Jamaica. People answering you in Canada. You get put on hold. Sometimes you purchase plans, and you go out. The thing just spinning, spinning. You call the number, you call this number, they have to put you onto this person, that person. Like I said, you can't even understand the accents. I think they in Guyana answering BTC calls and all. So like I said, we need accountability, and we need credit back. So take that back to your higher-ups and have an answer for the community of Cat Island. We are looking for compensation.
Okay, really?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, please tell us your name.
Good night, everybody. My name is... My name is Ethel Turner. I'm the principal of the Arthurstown Comprehensive School. My question is basically youth-related. I heard of all of the wonderful plans that our agencies have going on with the waterworks, the roadworks, the airports. My issue is, a lot of our young people still have to leave the island to find opportunities elsewhere. I love the quote the Prime Minister gave about, you know, having the opportunities home. Now, from each of our agencies, I want to know what plans you have in place as far as your businesses to train, develop, and employ our Cat Island people so that they can work here on the island and our island can grow economically as well as, you know, population? Because as a principal, you know, our school sizes are small. Our young people are going off and are coming back. The growth is not as it should be. I see some growth happening now, thanks to what's developing. But how can we improve on that? And how can we now employ our Cat Island young people in all of these different agencies? It's my question.
Okay, so I can start. At BPL, we've relaunched our craft apprenticeship program. And we recruit students from all over the Bahamas. We train them. Latest batch of craft apprentices are just completing the end of their second year. It's a two-year program. And once they're completed, they return to their home islands to work for BPL in various areas. So I'm certain there are residents of Cat Island who are in that program. In addition to that, we have a linesman training program, which just ended, I think, last year, where we had students from all over the Bahamas come into Nassau, complete the two-year training program, and then return home as full-time BPL employees. So that's one of the things that we're doing to develop Family Island residents, and then they go back home to work at the end of the training program.
For the SBDC, we're about entrepreneurship. So we understand that there are persons who will be employees, but also employers. And so for SBDC, we've launched, over the course of two years, our Young Entrepreneurs Initiative. And it's solely focused on those young, business-minded individuals between the ages of 18 and 35. We provide the training, we provide the access, we provide the mentorship, but we also provide the financing for them to start a business.
Thank you, my cousin. On the 1st of July, 2023, we launched the first-ever National Aviation Strategic Plan. There were eight components to this plan. One of the components was the building capacity of developing human capital. So since then, we actually would have launched what we now call the Bahamas Aeronautical Academy and also the Aviation Cadet Program. So we've been intentional for the first time ever in Bahamian history. So this particular program is designed to do three things. First of all, we are looking at your existing talent, how do you upscale existing talent? We are offering technical training, both for the, for example, everybody wants to be a pilot. But there are other components of aviation, such as what we're doing now with Bishop Roca in the Han Go Han Come, where he's taking our persons who can work in construction, because that is also related again to aviation. So we're doing the skills training. And then of course, we are working with major universities, such as Qatar Aeronautical Academy and Middle Tennessee State University. And we have two females out of high school for the first time, studying right now in Qatar. And that is since the launch of our Aeronautical Academy. One is graduating commercial pilot actually in December of this year. Two female students, with others have to go again to several universities. So we are intentional. I think I spoke to you today. And I said to you that if we find persons who are interested in aviation and even tourism, because tourism always does consist in a constant upskilling and training, whether it's through Bahamas or otherwise. But specifically for aviation, if we find a cluster of students in our school systems, like we have found in CB Bethel, an NGO major in Long Island, we are prepared to launch in Cat Island the first-ever Aviation Cadet Program that train persons again, not just to be pilot or cabin attendants, but how do we train them again in managing airports? One thing the Prime Minister has been assisted in saying was anybody coming in, whether under PPP arrangement or otherwise, the non-negotiable is that they must come in and they must train the next generation of aviation leaders. So we've seen that happen again in Bimini, in Lutro again, PPP, in Exuma. So we're building the next culture of, the next set of aviation leaders. So we're prepared to come in, identify talent, identify the gaps, and build now for the aviation for the future.
Hi, good night. From the water and sewage sector, what we are doing is we have a continued partnership with BTBI. So we are working closely with them in order to recruit persons who would have completed their various vocational programs that are related to what it is that we do, specifically from the plumbing aspect. So one of the things actually that we would like to share, and we want to encourage persons to capitalize on, is to have any young persons who, you know, are interested in the plumbing aspect, to please sign up with the BTBI program so that it's an opportunity for us to recruit them on our end upon completion of the program. As we've discussed time and time again, you would have seen representatives from water and sewage come to the island. We're looking at about 92 miles of pipe that's going in for the first time. So first time for access to pipe-portable water. Again, these things are man-made, so we anticipate some challenges further down the line, clearly not off the bat. But when that time comes, we want to ensure that we have capable persons on island who can address these issues. We are anticipating over 800 new service connections to various homes, residents, and businesses. We need to ensure that there are persons on island who actually can make that connection. One of the things that we want to stress, the cooperation, we install the service up until about three feet into your private property. At that point, the expectation is that you, the customer, will then connect it to your residence. In order to do that, we have to ensure that you have capable and competent plumbers who are able to install these connections. So again, these are things that we're going to be calling upon you to assist us with. And these are, again, opportunities for young persons to get involved in the process as well. We also anticipate opening a site office here in Cat Island. Again, it won't create a large platform, but at least it's an opportunity for more persons, even on the administrative side, the financial side, to be involved in the process of what we do as water and sewage. So again, we are creating the opportunities and the platforms for persons to come in and to participate in these projects as well.
So as I mentioned earlier, so we are embarking on a really big project, a really big undertaking. And particularly when we think in BTC, as it relates to Family Islands, we want to use Family Islanders to service Family Islanders. We don't necessarily want persons that come in from New Providence to rescue the Family Islands. So what we have done in Bimini, we actually use the skills and train persons in Bimini, the same thing that we did in Lutro, and we intend to do the same in Cat Island. So in a very short order, we would be looking for persons, young persons, that we could train, that can actually be trained in a next-generation fixed wireless access solution, and the skills that could be used to service other islands. So that's our intention, that's what we intend to do in a very short order at BTC.
Thank you all. Sounds really good. Sounds really good. Kim, hopefully I answered your question. That's a lot of opportunity.
Yes, thank you. I look forward to exchanging contacts with each of you to make sure that my students here on Cat Island benefit from those.
Say your name again. There you go.
Ethel Turner, Principal of Arthurstown Comprehensive School, but I speak for all of our students on Cat Island. Thank you.
There you go. Make the connection. Yes, sir. Tell us your name.
Maurice Russell. My concern here is, even though they are doing a good job, I'm going to be upfront. The Prime Minister said for us to be both rigorous, and that's what I'm going to do. We must understand that with BPL and BTC, they are doing a good job. But there is one issue where they fall down. The issues why we have in these disconnections, nobody wants to speak to it. The phone lines are too low. When I go down the road with my big equipment, I pull them down. That's the problem. I'm going to be frank. I shouldn't have a guy in the back of my truck trying to lift wires to get electrocuted. It's wrong. So what we do, we pull them down until they take them to the right height. What am I saying? I'm not saying intentionally. A lot of times, it's mistakenly pulled down because we can't do any better, because there's an opposite traffic coming. So that's what's happening here in Cat Island. And thank you very much. That's for the BTC and BP Ed.
There you go. So it sounds like your investigation is closed, you know, the culprit.
Please!
Tell us your name. Tell us your name.
Maurice Russell.
That's the culprit. Anybody want to speak to the low-line wires? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so I could speak to the low-line. So we are aware of the low-lines. I'm pleased to say that we do have persons on the ground now that are actually addressing the low-line. So they're actually elevating the line, so we are aware of it. Absolutely.
So the lower-hanging lines are typically BTC and cable Bahamas. Our lines are usually at the top of the pole. There may be service lines that can be lower, that are running from the pole maybe to someone's home. And those lines are usually at the height of the service mast coming out of the top of their homes. So in terms of what we can, I mean, we would probably have to put it underground to go to their home. But then, at the expense of the customer, they would have to change their entire service to an underground service. So those types of things, if you point them out to us, we can try and assist in some way. But most of the lines you pull down will probably be DC lines, and then our lines come down behind them.
Dwayne?
Oh, mine.
Tell us your name, sir.
I'm Michael Smith, and I reside in Smiths Bay. I am so happy to hear that my good friend, Mr. Russell, is responsible for all of the outages that I've been experiencing. That was one of my questions here today, because I heard the good gentleman from BTC speak about something happening, but he was not in any way specific as to what we should expect for them to be delivering to us early next year. I also wanted to ask the lovely lady from BPL whether or not there was the plan to bring underground lines to Cat Island, because we all know that this is a high-storm area. Anytime there was a storm in the past, we had Irene come back in 2011, and the power was out for four or five months. So what we need to have is underground systems where we can have our power restored relatively quickly. And last but not least, this is probably something that needs to be addressed by...
No, no, let's do one question at a time. What's your first question?
I wanted to have something specific about how our phone system is going to be addressed in the next three months.
Yeah, so to speak specifically to the phone system, I assume you're actually referring to the home phone, or is it mobile?
No, I'm talking about mobile system. Nobody has home phones anymore.
Okay. All right, yeah, so with the mobile, with the mobile network, we, the focus is actually to optimize the mobile network. What we have...
What we have right now is a mobile network that is congested. So where you have a large volume of persons that are actually trying to access or use data at the same time. So in terms of optimization, optimization will actually allow more bandwidth. So you can actually have more persons on that particular network at the same time. But further to that, one of the things that we're actually focusing on as it relates to the new network that we're actually going to put in, that will actually move away a lot of the traffic that would be coming, that actually is required to come from that particular seam and tunnel. So as a result, you will have more capacity and more ability for you to be able to get the speed that you actually need.
I'm not talking about speed, sir, I'm talking about service. There's absolutely no service, nothing. I'm not talking about slow service, I'm talking about no service. That's the problem, and I want you to address to me and to the people of Cat Island, what are you going to do to ensure that we are no longer having all these dead dates?
Yeah, so as, as I mentioned, as I mentioned previously, we are embarking on repairing a lot of fiber throughout the island. So without trying to get too technical, the fiber is responsible for actually bringing the signal to actually the tower so you'll be able to receive communication. We do have some dead spots that could be impacted as a result of a sector being down on the tower. So those are some of the things that we would be optimizing. So that's what I actually was speaking to in terms of optimization. So each tower actually have three different sectors, which actually points in three different directions, so you'll be able to receive service when you go from one point to the next. So there are, there are some things that we are looking at, and we're looking at to optimize in the first quarter of 2026.
Okay. Madam from BPL, did you remember the question, or do I need to repeat it? Okay, okay.
So every type of infrastructure has pros and cons. The pro to the overhead network is faults are easier to locate and faster to repair. So yes, I understand that we live in a hurricane belt. However, the poles and lines can be replaced a lot faster than underground cables can. And underground cables fail as well, not in storms, but for other reasons. Flooding can cause them to fail. If we have an underground cable running under the road, for example, and Mr. Russell with his heavy equipment, you know, causing some vibrations and the like, that can do some damage to the underground cables as well. The issue is, when we have to repair those cables, it takes a very long time. Underground faults are difficult to locate and timely to locate. And then we have to get a baco, but I'm sure Mr. Russell will be very happy about that, because we have to rent his baco to excavate where the cable is laid, that may be digging across the road. Ministry of Works hates when we do that. Water and sewage hates when we do that, because sometimes we may hit their lines. Not that they have any here, but they're getting them. But when they do, when they, when they do get them here, that also creates an issue. And PM can tell you, underground faults take a very long time to repair. In addition to having to excavate, having to locate the fault, having to repair the cables, and then reinstate the road, making sure that you don't damage any other infrastructure along the way, your power can sometimes be out for days for one simple underground fault. Now, I understand the inconvenience of the overhead lines during storms, but they can be repaired a lot faster. And the cost of underground infrastructure is much higher, as I mentioned. You have to trench, the cables have to be buried at a certain depth, and then every time you have to repair them, you have to excavate and reinstate. Right, and then, yeah, and the water table, of course, affects how deeply you can lay the underground cables as well.
Okay, so I guess we're stuck, you're saying, with what we have.
Well, you know, the beauty of having the Prime Minister as your member of parliament is that he can allocate capital to BPL to, you know, put in underground infrastructure.
Excellent, thank you very much. I'm glad you said that, and he's listening. My last, well, it's not really a question, but it's a point. Whilst we have all of these lovely projects going on, we do need to consider that this is still, these are various communities. And persons like me, who like to walk, we only have one option, and that's to walk on the street. And these trucks are driving up and down, and people are moving fast. And what I think we need to have are parks in each community. Something must be done so that each community has a place where they can go, and they can exercise, they have some good space. Children can come and play. We need, we need this sort of stuff here in Cat Island. That's, that's the last thing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll take our final question. This young lady from, from, from Cat Island, go ahead. Tell us your name.
My name is Amae Major, and I'm a student of Austin Comprehensive School. Can young entrepreneurs, can, can young entrepreneurs get grants?
Can young entrepreneurs receive grants?
Yes, young entrepreneurs can receive grants. And how we do that, however, is that we provide funding to formalized businesses. So as soon as you have a business license, we're able to do that. However, SBDC has always been a partner across a number of schools, high schools, primary schools. As part of our program, we partner with these schools to provide entrepreneurial training, to provide information. And so as soon as that you, as soon as you're ready, so we help with the readiness aspect. As soon as you're ready, you're able to get your business license, we provide the grant funding to young entrepreneurs.
Okay.
Thank you very much, thank you. I'm glad she's talking about businesses. See, we need young people who want to start companies and not looking for a job. They want to be the employer, not be the employee. That's the way you think. Good job. If you have a business idea, you remember Parliament is the Prime Minister. There we go, school's out, sorry, go ahead. Come, miss, come.
I just wanted to point out that the balloon columns is actually her business.
Ah. Hold on, these balloons, come here, young lady. You are national TV, I can promote your business right now, free of charge, come. Come, 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 come. So this, this is what you do?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Because honey, a 30-second spot will cost you $500, and that's going to be free for you right now. So tell us about your business idea, so that people who are watching live on television can know. What is it that you do?
I'm a, I set up for people, and I fix up the place, yeah.
So you do all this yourself, design the balloon trees, and you blow them up and put them together?
With the help of my mommy, yes, sir.
Good stuff. You have a name for your company yet?
Yes.
Your mommy, momma, you got your license there? All right, so, so listen, this is good, because in Nassau, I can tell you what they did to pay for this. All right, so you have this in Cat Island, how many of you knew she had this business? How many of you knew she had this business? So you didn't know, one or two people. She has a business. Mom, where do you operate, from home and you, indoor, from home, right? Okay, how can they reach you? One sec, one sec, come, 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 come. As they pull out their phones now to put your number in their phone.
Most of them know the service Mr. Sineer Rule, and, oh, sorry. You can reach at 809-7811. And it's Amae's Luxe Creation.
Amae's?
Luxe Creation.
Luxe Creation. Congratulations to you. What grade are you in?
Seven.
You're grade seven, and you got your own company already. Congratulations to you. I'm sure people are going to be calling you all and hearing about you. You got to come to Nassau to promote your company, okay? Congratulations to you. Give her a hand for this, man, this is amazing. As we prepare to close up this town hall meeting, I, I, I'm glad that happened, because I want to end on a note that I think is very important. And the question I asked at the end of talking to her was, how many you know about her business, how many you have supported her business? And maybe one or two hands went up. And that's what we had to begin doing as Bahamians. We had to begin supporting our own, not pulling people down. We had to begin buying from our own and not talking about them. The only way we can be successful as a Bahamian people in business and entrepreneurship, no matter how much economic opportunities, no matter how much new roads, how new much, new airports you have, how many new facilities you have, if we do not support our own, we will experience the economic boom that's being put in place. Final thing I want to say is, the economic transformation begins here first. No matter what's around you, Cat Island can get every single thing that it needs in life. And you will still not, not have economic prosperity until it begins in your mind. And when it begins in your mind, you will always want to give to others. And when we all start supporting each other, no one will go without. And you won't need to have a tourist to come to give you a dollar, because down the road will give you five dollars. And so that's the lesson we have to learn. I have been telling people all over this country, that no matter what economic boom, people always complain about the economy. People always complain about you need this, you need that. But we don't recognize that we have the ability as a Bahamian people to transform our country just simply by transforming our mind and helping and supporting others rather than pulling them down. That's the best economic recovery our country could ever experience if we begin it in our heads. And so thank all of you for watching our show tonight. It's been an hour and a half, my boss can get mad, oops, that's me. Okay, so we have no problem with that tonight. But it was important, how many enjoyed the town hall meeting tonight from Cat Island? It's certainly been a pleasure. Thank you for watching the rundown. We'll be back in January, you'll have a new host in January, you heard it from me. But we'll be back next year. Thank you for supporting this special town hall meeting from Cat Island. And where are we going to next? Which island? Ooh, it could be your island next. Among all of us here, our cameraman Victor, of course, McCuslin who's in the back, and all of the team here, Dwayne and Homa, thanks for watching. Please, have a great night, everybody.